In this election year, there are seven candidates vying for three open seats on the East Palo Alto City Council. On this special edition of Talking with Henrietta, we'll talk to each of them. Join us. Thank you so much, the seven of you, for being with me this evening to talk about your candidacy and the issues affecting East Palo Alto. So for our discussion tonight, you are asked only not to interrupt each other, not to talk over each other, and not to give a monologue. We're not going to strictly enforce any time parameters. So it will be up to you and me to make sure that your remarks are within a reasonable amount of time. And so our discussion will be in two parts. I'll ask you questions as a group, and then a few questions of each of you that all of you can answer. And then we'll have a discussion where we'll all be talking with each other, where you will be allowed to ask questions of each other. So now with the formal part, let me start with the first question, which is, what makes you think, each of you, that you're qualified and prepared to sit on the East Palo Alto City Council? Antonio, let me start with you.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Apologies for being late. I was just finishing an event on energizing our high school and middle school kids to get into college. So thank you for being patient with me. Thank you, Henrietta, for creating and facilitating this space. Thank you to my incumbents for attending, for our candidacy attending. Hopefully, when we first get out of this conversation, it's just seeing the talent and the power and the potential of this city. And everyone is, we all have the same interest of elevating this community. That being said, in terms of my qualifications, right? So for me, I think it is essential that we have a young person in the council. When we think about what a democracy is in its essence, it is to represent everyone from this community. And a lack that I have seen systemically is a lack of youth leadership in our council. And it's important that as the millennials are coming back to college, as kids are wondering how they're going to be able to afford to entrepreneurial generation of this community, it is important and essential that we have someone there who understands the specific plight of our community. And more importantly, as the elders of the Abrikas in the world and the Mawais in the world are leading us and in their wisdom, that there is someone being a conduit to help bring that knowledge and that political insight into our generation as well. And in terms of what makes me capable, I think it's important to have someone who can build bridges. At Duke University, I majored in African-American studies and literature, because I think it is important that in a city like East Palo Alto, which is two and a half square miles, we need to have someone who not only speaks the language, but understands different cultural experiences and understandings, and to know what it takes to bring folks to the table who may historically have tensions or might have misunderstandings. So I want to be someone who deliberately and adamantly invites everyone to have those candid and important conversations. And I think the youth understand this intuitively, right? And so that is why I'm really excited to announce my candidacy for East Palo Alto City Council as your councilman.
Thank you, Antonio. Let's...
Thank you for inviting me to your show and, you know, and I really appreciate allowing me to be on your platform. So yeah, I bring, you know, my experience, you know, personally, I grew up here, just like many other candidates. But I've really lived here my whole life. You know, I went to Menlo, Atherton, attended Townsend State University. My first job was at SRI, which is across the street from Menlo, Atherton. You know, so, you know, I've grew up here, you know, I've been a part of the system, you know, playing in the Batay Hero football to go into college and working here, you know, and I bring a lot of experience in terms of being really from the Bay Area, you know, and being really a part of everything. And also as a young candidate, you know, I feel like, you know, the council needs some younger experience and people who've not only went to college, but came back and also work here in the Bay Area and have a lot of experience. So I think as from a leadership perspective, that's really what I bring.
Okay, thank you. Lisa?
Sure. Thank you, Henrietta, and thank you for your patience. Again, I've been here, my family moved to East Palo Alto since 1967, so I'm a product of this community as well. All of my schooling and everything was here. I was fortunate enough to come back and raise my children here as well. I have been on the council since 2012. I've served in the capacity of mayor twice and vice mayor twice. While being mayor last year, I was able to go back to school and earn my bachelor's degree as an adult after making sure that I invested in my children and made sure that my daughters both earned their degrees. I have a daughter who graduated from Spelman and has her master's degree from USC. So to be able to go back to school and even in that, to see that it impacted the community and had more community members who are my age who wanted to go back to school, really meant a lot to me. And then going back and just looking at the things that I do in the community, I'm out there volunteering. This community means a lot to me, because I'm not only looking out for me, I'm looking out for the future. And I'm, my daughter's going to have a grandson, a son soon, and within the next month, so I'm going to be a grandmother. So when I think about the future of East Palo Alto, it's not just my future, it's the future of my grandson as well. So it's with that experience of being on the council that I think I'm qualified. Thank you.
Juan?
Yeah, I want to just go ahead and thank, you know, you for allowing to be, allowing all of us to be on your platform and, you know, sharing a little bit about who we are and our hopes for East Palo Alto. I'm pretty sure everyone here, every candidate here, has good intentions and a good heart for what they want to do with East Palo Alto. So similar to Webster and Antonio, you know, I also aspire to see a change in our city council, our current city council. I think we need young advocates from East Palo Alto that bring new energy and perspectives into the council. You know, I think having a broad range of not only age, but experience and energy is what we need. And we need to diversify our city council. So that's part of the reason why I'm running. But I'm also running because, you know, I've always been interested in serving East Palo Alto. You know, I think it started when I was in high school at East Palo Alto Business Academy, when Laura Martinez was actually running for a city council, and she was doing our after-school program. So having her, you know, go through that process, come to our after-school program and just inspire our youth to be leaders and movers and shakers in East Palo Alto, I think really is what started my interest in being part of council. So, you know, I went off to college at UC Berkeley, ended up with a full scholarship there, thankfully, you know, through the resources and people around me. Most importantly, I think I was able to do that. So as an undergrad, I began looking at how I can get involved with my city more directly, whether that's through the planning department, whether that's through departments or actually interning under city council. You know, I was always interested a little bit, learning a little bit more about my community. And I think what was unfortunate was, I believe it was at one of the city council retreat meetings, I showed up and I, you know, was looking for an opportunity, you know, being a junior in college, you know, trying to expand my network and my experience, you know, to be more qualified for the workforce. I come to find out that, you know, unfortunately, there is no such internship opportunity that exists in East Palo Alto for our youth. So that in itself, that experience and that moment there really got me going. So what I ended up doing from February 2019 until, I want to say, May, was really understand what was going on in my city. You know, I learned there were 27 developments coming up in East Palo Alto. I learned about, you know, what was going on in our school board. I learned about, you know, many different things with our water, with the water morgue term that we had. A lot of things that made me question, you know, what was going on in our city and what the future holds for ourselves. So I ended up getting involved, and this kind of goes into my qualifications. I ended up applying for the planning commission.
Juan? We're going to have to come back to that.
Okay. So qualifications, really quick, qualifications, I'll cut it down 30 seconds. Qualifications, I'm on the planning commission, I'm not, I'm a planning commissioner, I'll turn here currently. I understand what's going on in the city. I study public policy and I understand, you know, the policy we set forth in our city must be adequate and equitable to everyone, to serve everyone in our community.
Okay.
Thank you.
If whatever you have unfinished, you'll have a chance.
Of course.
Sure. Larry?
Hi, I'm Larry Moody. I'm an incumbent candidate for reelection. Qualifications. I'm a husband and a father of four. I have four sons who, when we arrived in 1992, we were committed to making sure that they had the right pathway and a healthy pathway in life here in East Palo Alto. So that automatically engaged us in the activities of the school district and engaged us in activities of youth sports, youth programs, sports programs. I'm a former director of the Boys and Girls Club of East Palo Alto. Actually, I was one of the first directors that opened up that facility, very intentional about following the pathways of my children and making sure that my children, who actually are at similar ages as some of the other candidates here, had the right outcomes for residents of East Palo Alto. And it actually led into a lot of educational initiatives for me. One, the Ravenswood School Board, I became a trustee there and served for four years there. From that, during, while sitting on that seat, got involved with an initiative that Stuart and I helped lead called Making It Happen for Our Children, which he named, right? And the goal being is that we wanted to make sure a community that was, that had a failure, high failure to complete averages for our student body, we changed those outcomes around. So we were very intentional, we applied for National Promise Neighborhood Grant. We actually came in 22nd out of 21 candidates, but we had a real strong application. But more importantly, we were able to rally and bring hundreds of stakeholders to the table to really begin this dialogue about how to change the outcome for the East Palo Alto community. Now, it sounds like four of you actually were direct recipients from that type of thinking, because you were able to go off to colleges and universities and get your degrees, right? And get equipped to come back to the East Palo Alto community and make an investment back in your own community. And I applaud you for that. So that's, I've been on the council since 2012. One of the things that I've learned over the years is that you have to collaborate, you have to work with people. There's no one person that has all the answers and can move the agenda for the city. But there's always room at the table, and I want to continue being at the table for the next four years.
Okay. Look, Stuart?
Good evening. Henrietta, this is, everyone has said it's great that you're using your platform this way. And I just want to give you props to trying to have a newspaper in East Palo Alto, our own EPA today. It's not an easy thing to do, and so we appreciate when it does come out. My name is Stuart Highland. I am, like Larry, a husband, but a father of only three sons. And my time here in East Palo Alto started for me coming from Oakland. I grew up in the Bay Area. And so like a lot of our folks at St. Francis, that I look up to, Alan McIntyre, God bless her, Mother Mouton. My family moved from Louisiana to California and then, you know, I come here. So I bring kind of that spirit. I was raised a Southern Baptist, but now I'm Catholic. And so I see change and growth as part of a natural way of being. Coming here to East Palo Alto, meeting Dr. Omo, Bob, and Mother Mouton, Mrs. Wilkes, I felt at home because I was in an activist community of folks. And I have to include Abrika and Carlos in that as well. I felt really at home in an activist community of folks that take their self-determination seriously, that understand their culture and know their history, how rich it is, and don't let anybody try to tell them, you know, how we're supposed to be. These are folks who developed the Nairobi education movement. And so in 1999, when Dwayne Bay came to our block, our block club meeting and talked about the neighborhood improvement initiative with the Hewlett Foundation, I really dug into that. And it was a chance to really broaden my base of getting to know folks in the community, also through the work with PIA as well, across language barriers, cultural barriers, learning all of who the Tongan and Samoan community is, who the leaders are from the Spanish-speaking community, Avalar family, I have to raise them up. Just done tremendous work in building up folks. So kind of seeding the ground for the young men I see here. I don't know if any of you went to the LTA, the Leadership Training Academy, but something like that I'd like to see brought back. So one of the goals that I see that's really important to me is bringing back some of the successful ways that we created pipelines from birth to college and careers. So when Larry talks about the Making It Happen, that's that kind of model. And so just kind of wrapping up really quickly, my qualifications are, I have always been a leader in the community, whether nonprofit. As an organizer, I always go back and listen to the people and bring them to the folks who have the decision-making capability, which is the city council. So I understand how the city council works, and I also understand that sometimes an outward pressure into the city council really makes things happen.
Thank you.
Measure C funding.
Thank you. Carlos?
Yes, thank you also, Henrietta, for providing this forum. So I'm a 38-year resident of East Palo Alto, though have worked here for 42 years, starting in my freshman year at Stanford. By training, I'm an affordable housing economic development professional, having run nonprofits in San Francisco, also having developed throughout California, done consulting, worked both in Hawaii as well as Arizona. So my education is between Stanford and Harvard. I did graduate work at the Graduate School of Design and the Kennedy School, primarily in affordable housing, affordable housing finance, and advanced kind of real estate metrics and techniques. I was the former chair of the Rent Stabilization Board, I was the former chair of the Planning Commission prior to becoming a city council member. Also chaired the East Palo Alto Redevelopment Agency when it existed. I have been mayor, vice mayor, and now am vice mayor again. I've been on council for 10 years. But those are all kind of interesting bona fides. But for me, I think what is critical and I think what I have always brought to both my work life, my political life, and my organizing life is that I am an organizer and an activist by vocation. We do not change a society that is clearly skewed in one direction, not in the direction of people of color, not in the direction of the economically underprivileged, unless we organize, unless we are activists moving the needle on social and economic justice. And that is what drives me, both from a moral center as well as from a political activist center. And so you can have all that other stuff, the education, the experience, but if you don't have a central core that puts people, and particularly low-income people of color, front and center, then I think it's very difficult to say that you were working community. So I try to bring that. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Now, you might have touched upon this a little in your remarks. What I'd like to do is ask you to describe your personal philosophy and how it would shape your decision if you're elected to the council. How would your personal philosophy shape your decision-making? And I'll go back to the beginning again. However, I'll start with Webster.
So East Palo Alto is a unique city. I mean, since it was founded, even before it was founded, you know, people of color really couldn't live in the surrounding areas. So East Palo Alto was a place for a lot of people who were coming from the South after World War II, who, you know, wanted to settle here, start a family, you know, and a lot of people here in East Palo Alto, you know, came from that. So my focus and my philosophy is on the people and the residents of East Palo Alto, you know, focusing on bringing jobs, you know, and businesses to East Palo Alto that want to hire and employ those within our community. Going around and speaking with people, that's, you know, a big concern, you know, because we have a lot of development going on. And people are concerned that this development's just going to end up pushing them out, you know? Is it providing people with opportunities, you know, so that they aren't excluded or they're not displaced, you know? And some, those are a lot of the concerns in the community, and that's really what I want to, you know, focus on. And, you know, providing people with opportunities, you know, because for me, I grew up here, you know, I'm successful. You know, I work in biotechnology. And, you know, I've been able to make it out of a place where they once called it, you know, the murder capital of the United States, you know? And to be able to, you know, overcome those obstacles and to get to where I'm at today, you know, I want to be able to give back to my community and to the people of East Palo Alto. So really, that's my focus and my philosophy.
Sure. Antonio?
Yeah, absolutely. Our slogan is "A Bridge for Success," right? Because what is a bridge in its essence? A bridge connects two parts that are seemingly opposite of each other. Whether we're talking about the bridge connecting Palo Alto and East Palo Alto, whether we're talking to Edmund Putt's Bridge, the late Congressman John Lewis Cross, right? When we think about how, to similar to Carlos's remarks, how we're going to uplift East Palo Alto, we need someone who is thinking across ethnicities, across classes, because this is a rapidly transforming city. We have folks coming in with, from more affluent backgrounds. We have a rising Latino population, right? And when we think about those changes, we have to also make sure that the communities that have been living here can want to afford to live here and still have their voices heard, right? So when I think about my philosophy, it all goes back to when I was in Edison McNair Academy, not formerly Rosario-Lesmerger, and there were 32 of us in that portable classroom, all cramped up. And, you know, we were going to the society, gave us the short end of the stick. Being what we did have, we had a shared language of Samoan, Tongans, Blacks, and Latinos, all sharing space, breaking bread, understanding that we are here now, whether we came from Tonga or Mexico or Louisiana, Stuart was saying, right? We're here now trying to make sure that these two and a half square miles are home, and how do we do that? As I said before, it starts with council members who are able to understand that change and are addressing it. That is when we talk about, you know, affordable housing. I'm running on comprehensive rent forgiveness, because the community is not going to be able to afford paying it back. And we have to get state and federal aid to help us. It also starts with addressing our African-American community and making sure that the businesses that they've had for decades get served, that the Nairobi schools back in the day, that we helped to revitalize that curriculum and make sure that we're helping uplift, uplift our African-American and Pacific Islander neighbors. It starts with creating mentorship programs. That is why I'm extremely thrilled to see Juan and Webster here, because think of the position and power we have to say, you are not young enough to run for council, and we want to be conduits and sources of inspiration to, so they, so folks and young youth can go farther than we ever even dreamt. That is what my father wanted, that is, I'm sure your father's wanting, your parents, and that's what we're sitting today. So mentorship. And finally, when we think about the folks that are coming in and the tension that we obviously have with gentrification, with folks that are more affluent coming in and changing the quote-unquote "culture", how do we harmonize that? For me, it's about creating progressive taxation so that the liberal-minded folks that are coming here can pay their fair share. That is what Measure V is in its essence, right? It's about what equity, what Carlos was saying about equity, that it is not about meeting 50/50. It's about if you have more power and privilege, you have to make sure you pay your fair share. So that is our platform.
Thank you. Lisa?
Sure. Great question. You know, I was raised by a single mother. There were six of us in our family, and I raised in East Palo Alto in a time where my mother decided that instead of renting, she wanted a house for her children. And she was able to secure a home in this city long ago. Right now, I look at a city and if I were to try to buy a home right now, I wouldn't be able to do that. So my philosophy is like looking at the community as a whole and trying to take care of the community as a whole, looking at the ones that is the least, because we can't leave anybody behind. And I often think about our community, thereby the grace of God go I. So when I go in the community and I'm providing hot meals, or if I'm trying to make sure somebody has clothing, or they can pay their rent, or they can pay their car note, it is knowing that we're all in this together at the end of the day and that we're all just, sometimes one paycheck away from being that homeless person on the street. So being mindful that no one is better and that we need to be pulling each other up. I know that I am in the position that I am in today because somebody else paved the way for me. So I want to be able to do the same and pave a way and make sure that there is space for the next person. And we have to do that. We have to, I appreciate all of the youth. This is amazing to have a city where we have such talent in the city and that we can have this many people sitting vying for seats, and we know that the city is going to be okay no matter what. Thank you.
Interesting. Yes. Juan? Your personal philosophy and how it would shape your decision-making if elected to the council?
Yes. So when I started thinking about, you know, my philosophy and values, I think I reimagine, you know, my parents' struggles of coming to the state. You know, my parents are both from Guatemala, you know, grew up in poverty. My parents lived in cardboard boxes, you know, and left their home country, most importantly, seeking a better life and seeking a better opportunity for themselves and their kids. So when I think about my personal values and philosophy of what I would bring to East Palo Alto, it's just something much similar to their philosophy and values, you know? Finding and coming to a place and creating opportunities for others to thrive and succeed on, you know? Coming into East Palo Alto, how are we gonna, you know, the conditions that it's going to get turned into us, how are we gonna leave this place, you know, in four years if we get elected and leave it better for the next generation or the next person behind us that's coming into East Palo Alto? So that is my philosophy and values. You know, it's honesty, transparency, and most importantly, service. You know, my, as a, since a young child, my parents have always taught me that there is always someone out there that has less than what we have. So always be thankful about what we do have and never, you know, never envy people that do have more than us, right? We should be, we should always be thankful about what we have. So what I want to say with all this is that East Palo Alto is in a unique situation right now, where we need leaders that are going to bring honesty, transparency, and most importantly, service and to serve all of East Palo Alto, and find it and leave it better than how we received it. And I think, I think I can end him with that.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Larry?
So I arrived here in 1992, a part of a ministry effort to address the violence and the activity that was going on in East Palo Alto. And interestingly enough, I actually, I had residency with, on 1955 Manhattan, and Reverend Bob Hartley was one of my mentors at the time, and bless his heart. And my role really was to help the community deal with the issue of drugs, violence that was running rampant through our community. Ministry drives my agenda. I'm a Christian, I'm a person of faith. I don't try to waver from it, so that means I'm a servant leader, right? I didn't always look for seats at the front of the table. I just wanted to be a part of the process of lifting up humanity here in East Palo Alto. My first assignment was with the midnight basketball program and working at the old Ravenswood site. And I was the security guard. I had one little vest and one little whistle, trying to make sure that the guys that were in the parking lot weren't drinking alcohol, smoking weed, and that they would go inside and become, and participate in the program. Two years later, the participants of the program chose me to lead the program, but they saw some value in me and they saw some sincerity and focus on my reasons for being there. They knew I cared about them, right? I then ultimately became the head of the Bell Street Gym and ran the recreation program. I was involved with every aspect of youth development in this community. So when I look at Juan, I look at Antonio, and you talk about McNair and you talk about Aspire. I have probably had something to do with making sure you have books, making sure that you have supplies, making sure that the teachers that were on those campuses were individuals who would have the skill sets to work with our kids. I, as the head of the Boys and Girls Club, we were servicing over 300 kids a day. And my job there was, I was the social education director there. And we kept kids safe and we equipped them, we created a safe environment for them. Antonio, you certainly know, because you had to come through those doors when you got out of the school, because all the after-school programs was being run by us. Then I went to Menlo Park Presbyterian Church. Then I went to Menlo Park Presbyterian Church and I became the director of local and urban ministry. And Stuart can attest to this. When I went there, I told him, I'm not trying to be your Jackie Robinson over here. But to your tone, Antonio, we wanted to create a bridge that went from that community back into ours. And more importantly, our community had access to their community, because we believe that we have value as well.
So Larry, I don't wanna interrupt, but if you could.
So I, I, I think this is some.
Just talk about how that's going to influence your decision-making.
Well, I think it's, um, it's, it's the consistency of my decision-making that I bring to the table. I'm, you know, I'm a lifter up of humanity, right? I'm not working in one set, one part of town versus another. Uh, my role and, and as a council member over the last, uh, eight years has always been the judgment towards humanity and lifting up the quality of life for all East Palo Alto residents. And I, I, I'd stand behind that track record. I think most people who know me know that I care deeply about this community and the, all the individuals that are in it.
Thank you, Larry, thank you, Stuart.
My personal philosophy, um, really stems a lot from the way I was raised by both my parents. Uh, and both my mother and father were servants, were making sure that they were there with their kids. My dad was a scoutmaster, my mom was a den mother, she was a nurse by trade, my dad was a warehouseman. So union was a big part of our household. And, um, my dad was the head of the dads' club. And later on, once he retired, he took his little Chevy truck and he was going to Second Harvest. And he was like the distribution center for our neighborhood, uh, just, just a little bit south of, uh, Eastmont Mall. So I really, that servant attitude is something I carry with me, is really essential to my character. But there's also something about me that kind of aligns with Carlos, it's just, I just, I can't stand injustice. I can't stand to see somebody not done right. And so, um, as much as I want to be the councilperson for everyone in East Palo Alto, I unabashedly for lower-income folks who are trying to make it here on the peninsula, period. So it doesn't matter if you're black, brown, from the islands, Fiji, you know? If you say Bula or if you say, you know, Malolele, I don't care, it's not about that. It's really about us having a place here. So class are an essential part of my philosophy too, and how historically that is, that's worked in this United States. So my decision-making is gonna have all that equity piece along with it. So it may seem, I mean, Antonio pointed it out really clearly from Carlos, equity is not about fifty-fifty. If I wanna look over the fence and see the game and my, my little brother is shorter than me, he doesn't need a box as tall as my box, he needs a taller box so he can see over there, so that we can all watch the game. So that's, that's really the guiding principle for my philosophy. And along with that goes expertise, you gotta do your homework. Before that packet comes, I, I wanna know the background of whatever's gonna come in the city council packet well ahead of what the staff gives. So I'm gonna do my own personal homework and my own research, because as an organizer, I know there's plenty of times the community being closer to the pain, which, which is another key part of my philosophy. Those folks closest to the pain can tell you what's wrong and they can often provide you the solution. So you have to listen to them as well as the experts and the folks we rely on as staff. So all of that comes together to be, um, my decision-making may be contentious to some folks. It may leave some people out of the conversation. I mean, I'm willing to listen to you, but I have to hold on to protecting this community first in a way that we can grow and still be successful. And just one example I would say of that is Measure C was a way that we took a hundred dollars from every parcel. I'm just gonna finish this and I'll be done. I can see your body language. Use that money to, um, fund lots of different programs throughout the city and encourage folks to collaborate and work together so that young people going from this school to that after-school program, there was a connection. And so that was super successful and that's part of my philosophy. How can we work together for an overall impact that really improves the lives of our young people?
Thank you, Carlos.
Yeah, I, I'd say probably three words that deal with that or three phrases, integrity, responsibility, and a constant collective pursuit for social and economic justice. That's the kind of trifecta of, of my philosophy. Certainly, my theory of the state, and let's call it my theory of the city, is that I totally believe that the police power of the state, not the police power in terms of a club, but the police power from the, from the Greek polis city should be used to advance equitable policy, social and economic justice, and uplift those who truly need help in society. I believe in redistribution of certainly the myriad benefits that have accrued to, um, folks who have gone to college, folks who are investors and entrepreneurs. And I unabashedly say that certainly in my ten years that I have been on the city council, all of my policies have been, a- as well as tax measures, as well as programs, have all been directed in that direction. How do we make East Palo Alto a more equal and equitable place to live? That uplifts people indeed, all of us, but certainly that gives priority to people who have been living in East Palo Alto for the last fifty, sixty years and structurally within the society have been neglected. And with the levers of power, I think it's possible to do that. Thank you.
Sure. Now, we all stand on the shoulders of those who've gone before us. And those of you who are younger, Juan, Antonio, Webster, you've heard, uh, those who are older than you in this forum talk about all the things that they have done to make way for you. So since there are only three seats on the council and there are three of you, how do you really feel, how would you feel replacing them? The people who paved the way for you?
Oh, what I think is that, um, you know, I think back to when I grew up here in East Palo Alto and all the programs and stuff in the community, whether it was plugged in, where I learned how to use the internet, you know, and whiskey gold, um, playing football, you know, and learning how, you know, and learning teamwork. Um, you know, being involved in the community, you know, and a lot of those programs, you know, that, that's what helped, you know, um, make me who I am, you know, today. And all the sacrifices, you know, of the elders in our community, you know? Um, I come from a good family, my grandfather, he taught, uh, math in Oakland, um, to high school students, algebra. And, you know, um, just the, the people in the community and all the leaders and all that, you know, that's what really, um, helped me a lot. And, you know, considering that, you know, we are younger, um, I think those are some of the things that I really wanna continue, making sure we're providing opportunities for the youth in our community, because eventually they will wanna come back just like us to make East Palo Alto a better place.
Antonio. You didn't exactly say how you feel replacing them, but that's okay, Antonio.
Well, I, I wouldn't call it replacing. I think i- i- it's deceiving to think decision-making is only in the council. I mean, we have to have community leaders, we need to have people who are working in nonprofits, like Larry was saying in the Boys and Girls Club, right? EPA is a small city that has historical and strapped for fun. And that's where we're at. And so we don't have time to say I'm replacing you, we don't have time for the division of a national politic. We can be better than the White House, and I think we truly are. And so I would very politely revise replace with succeed, right? What does the word successor mean? Successor means someone who follows you after, but within the word is exit, success. So I think how I feel is humble, right? When I think about the people who paved the way before me, which indeed are Carlos, Lisa and Larry, however much we differ in politics and, you know, I know Larry has his emphasis on development and Carlos in housing, right? Lisa, we need all of those pieces to work together, right? And when we begin to mischaracterize and get into demagogery, that's when we get into trouble. And the blunt answer to is we can't afford to get heated up and, oh, you replaced me. No, I, I welcome difference. I think that is one of the biggest assets of this city, the fact that we're so multi-ethnic and so all in the mix. And, you know, I can, I can work with John Bryan today and we're filming and then we eat lunch tomorrow and he says, oh, man, this goes way, and we share this land, right? And so, um, just to closing, I feel humbled and I have immense deference for the incumbents. And as I said in the initial remarks, we are all on the same page and we want for East Palo Alto. And I would be humbled to succeed them, right? Not to replace them, but to succeed this incumbent.
Juan.
Yeah, I think, uh, Antonio put it really well, you know, I don't, I mean, no, first of all, you know, the incumbents have done an excellent job with East Palo Alto and bringing us this far, you know? What was going on with the water moratorium and just coming out of that situation in itself, you know, uh, puts into perspective, you know, the difficulties that East Palo Alto found themselves in, you know, just a couple of years ago and to where we are now, it's really, it, it's amazing to see, you know, how, how far we made it. But as Antonio also mentioned, you know, I, I, I think it's, it's unique that East Palo Alto is so small that, you know, the word, not replacing them, but being able to learn from them. And, uh, the city being so small, them not being probably not too far away where we can, you know, knock on the doors and have a conversation about, you know, whether it's housing or development or whatever it is. I think that's what's so unique about East Palo Alto, we're not a big city. There is no such thing, like we can't learn from our past. And when, most importantly, when our incumbents are here to help us and provide even, even more insight of what they believe is the direction that East Palo Alto should go to, based on their experience and what they've been learning, you know? I think I remember hearing, reading somewhere that, you know, history repeats itself, right? So how are we gonna be able to learn from our mistakes? You know, the incumbents had to learn from someone, so who do we learn from? And I think, you know, that's, I think that's what's so unique about East Palo Alto. And if win or lose, or, or, you know, if, if, you know, we do, you know, you say replace them, I think it's been an honor to see, you know, our incumbents put so much work and dedication to East Palo Alto that I wish to, you know, mirror that energy and commitment to our city as well, so with that.
Thank you. So Stuart, you're not in that same generation as the three who talked just now before you. But you've worked very closely with Larry on projects with Carlos, with Lisa, and you talk about collaboration. So how would you, you know, if you're elected and you get one of their seats, would you feel that you replace them, one of them?
It couldn't be put more eloquently than what Antonio was saying about success. Um, and even though this is a small town, there are some sharp differences that from time to time are really the difference that, that, that needs to be made. Um, I talked about Measure C. Measure C was a push that didn't come from any of the folks here that are current incumbents. They were previous incumbents. And they weren't able to pass what was Measure K because they didn't go out to the community and garner resources. That was organizing work that was done. And it actually wasn't done by me, it was done under, uh, St. Francis LOC, but it was done by my wife, actually, as, as the head of that organizing campaign. And so, you know, having a good idea or having what the policy might be is one thing, but knowing how to talk to people and garner support is, is something I think I bring a little differently from this group, with the exception of maybe Carlos. But I would say that organizing mindset is really essential right now, because change is coming faster. The COVID is exaggerating, um, what poverty has been doing all along, it just made it worse compounded. So the tsunami of evictions that, that the city's been doing really good about fighting, I think most of the impetus from that, that success has come from outside of the, the city council in a way, with the pressure from organizers like El Comité with the work that they've done and Envision Transform Build ETB as well. So that's something, that's, that's my environment, that's where I'm coming from. So I feel like the more people know that someone like me who's already been so shoulder to shoulder with them and is marching and, 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 and in this work, um, having someone like that on the council just makes it a little easier to get the things done that are gonna need to be done.
So Stuart, you mentioned COVID nineteen, which is, gets us into my next question, which is that COVID nineteen is one of the biggest challenges right now affecting city residents since they have, the city has one of the highest rates of infection per population and ranks among the highest one in San Mateo County. So what steps would each of you take to address this issue? Or that you might be taking, Carlos?
Well, first of all, I, I think one of the biggest issues we are going to have, um, and it's already been brought up by Antonio, is that we're, we are on the cusp of experiencing, and in East Palo Alto, it's gonna happen in October, not in February, because we, we had the question to actually pass laws that, um, protect the tenants longer. But it really is, uh, for East Palo Alto, uh, it's a huge, the potential tsunami of evictions that may occur uh, because of basically the most affected people economically are working-class people of color and kind of lower-end of service sector jobs. Those are a lot of people in East Palo Alto. They will be eventually evicted if we cannot protect them, find ways to either negotiate down and/or subsidize or pay off that debt, as Antonio was saying. So that's important. In addition to that, though, we do have the issue of how do we test, uh, how do we test enough? And of course, how do we test in a culturally sensitive way? So that Pacific Islanders, Latinos feel that indeed they are, um, being approached where they need to be and not in a condescending medical way. City is attempting to do that with a separate program outside of what the county is doing through the early the curative program that we've been basically taking around the community. So that is vitally important. Um, and then lastly, I'd say that it's also, you know, quite critical in the short run to make sure that folks have the, the food, the, the, you know, some of the, some, some of the income subsidies that they need. Um, but lastly, I'll say, we must, COVID will be gone in a year to a year and a half. We need to keep our eye on some of the projects we've been working on already, the social justice issues, the economic justice issues, the issues that level the playing field. We address COVID at the same time, yet we continue to move forward on those key issues of equity.
Sure, Lisa.
And the question is, what would I do about COVID? We know that COVID, as you, as you've already stated, is impacting our communities significantly. What we need to do in order to restore our economy is to get rid of COVID. So that means that we need to follow the rules of social distancing and wearing your mask. There are often times when I'm in the community and people don't wear their masks. So how do you rid a disease if you're unable or unwilling to follow the, the guidance that will help you to get rid of it? And if we're, and when we're talking about, um, the rent and relief of rent, I sit on, on Living Pieces Board that has done some of the first, um, first of the month payments, where they've provided, provided three months' payment for a lot of the residents of East Palo Alto that will allow them to stay in their homes for at least the three months. And there are other programs that are doing the same thing. But what we really need to do is restart this economy, so we're not having this conversation of how people are gonna pay their rent. We need to get people back to work. And if we're gonna, in order to get people back to work, we need to rid ourselves of COVID. Follow the rules, wear your mask, social distance, get tested, but let's get rid of COVID altogether. Thank you.
Sure, Larry.
Well, I, I might have a different take on all of this. I, I think, um, you know, the responsibility of ri- ridding the city of COVID is not ours, right? I mean, obviously, we believe the scientists are gonna come up with a, with a cure, a solution that ultimately can get distributed throughout, throughout the, uh, these United States. What we do have responsibility for is maintaining, keeping our foot on the pedal for the testing. We're offering free testing here in our community, let's get our community fully tested. We need to follow the pathway that Lisa talked about, right? Social distancing, washing of your hands, wearing a mask. Then the other part that we have to be mindful of, as the economy is slowly starting to open up here in Silicon Valley, there are a wide range of jobs that are available. The economy is starting to move, employment opportunities are there for our local residents if they wish to engage in those. Now, Woodland Property, um, our largest, uh, rental property, uh, has shared with me that about eighty-six percent of their tenants are current with their rent, right? So the tsunami image, I don't know if that's, that's gonna be, um, as, as the word described. As the word describes, it's gonna hit our community at the end of October in such a way that we're gonna have this, you know? Thousands of people homeless out in the streets with their furniture and all those types of things. There has been a strong effort collectively between the city of East Palo Alto, the council. We released immediately three hundred thousand dollars and put it into the uh, coffers of Samaritan House. Uh, we've done all that we can to extend the moratorium on the rents. We have offered um, uh, a pathway for Samaritan House to receive a million dollar donation, right? So to make sure that families who are in need of of these subsidies have a pathway to get them. Lisa talked about live in peace. Job train raised over seven hundred thousand dollars to make sure that there was. Some funding for local residents and people who are participating. So um, we have uh, and also I want to say that. There was a point in time where all the testing was taking place up in the central area of San Mateo, up at the event center. And it took this council, right, and led by our mayor Wallace Jones, Regina Wallace Jones. To push the county to start coming to South County to do the testing, to make it available for our local residents who we know. Make up a wide range of essential worker type of positions. Now, we as a community uh, have a responsibility to be reactive. As a council to the needs of our community. I think we've done a great job. I think also because we have linkage with county agencies, right? We have the air that we're, whatever pathway they're designing for San Mateo County. We are a part of that distribution and and we're making it happen. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry. Now, I could ask that same question of the rest of you. However, I'll simply say, do you have anything to add on the topic that hasn't already been said? Antonio.
Um, I'm gonna respectfully push back with my so called quote unquote predecessor, I'm brother Larry Moody. And this notion of there isn't a tsunami. Number one, we don't even have all the full data of how much background is owed in Willen, Willen Parks. We just don't have it, right? I spoke with Victor Aminas on this topic. We do not have, it is a, it is akin, situation is akin to. Trying to describe cancer without knowing how big the tumor is or where it is, number one. Number two, when we think about how to respond to this pandemic, when we're, when we're partnering with nonprofits. Which has been the paradigm of this city, we have to ensure from the beginning. That we adequately are funding those nonprofits. For instance, Samaritan House, which I, I should say, I laud and admire and commend everything that they do. I commend Lisa and her work and live in peace. The nonprofits that are doing the work are doing Herculean efforts. That being said, from July to August of this year, thirty-nine hundred applications came to the desk of Samaritan House. With five full-time staffers for Samaritan House. So essentially, every staffer had eight hundred applications, more or less. And with two part-time temporary staffs. So when we're dealing with a crisis. I believe a council should, when we're partnering with nonprofits, ensure that the people that we're partnering with actually have the personnel. Because we saw this coming from Italy. We saw it from Korea. We saw it from England. This is, this is gonna be a devastating crisis. And so I think, you know, gathering the data, following up with our partners. And ensuring that if folks are saying, hey, wait a minute, the application is six days long. Hey, wait a minute, I, they're asking for information I don't have. That's slowing us down and we don't have time. The clock is ticking, as Carlos is saying, you know, and I think we just need to be proactive, innovative and be as efficient as possible. When we're dealing with an unprecedented crisis such as these, to take care of this community.
Can I respond to uh, Antonio since he lifted up my uh, my name?
Sure.
Yeah, so.
Discussion mode.
Okay, so um, you know, respectfully, so for the last seven months, we've been in this COVID crisis. And each and every day has been a new learning curve for the world. Alright, so when, when we began thinking about what lessons could have been learned seven months ago. There's a lot of data, right? And we can look at, at, you can pick a spot, the White House, let's start there. And say, you know, if there was some honesty coming out of there, we could have had some information that could have allowed us as a nation. As a county and the state to make some adjustments, right? Our city council, right, has been so engaged in this topic when we, when we first saw that our community was. Was on the verge of being impacted because the socioeconomic crisis, right? We are the last to get healthcare. We are, we, we don't have the healthcare package that other communities that have. We don't have access to healthcare like other communities have. So we knew, and also as a community of color, we are typically, we will hold on to our pain, right? We, to, for the last minute because we wanna make it to work, right? And many of our local residents continue to go to work, not understanding that they might have been asymptomatic. Right? But just trying to, trying to make it. Samaritan House obviously was certainly was overwhelmed. The council required Samaritan House on two occasions. Right? To report back, right? Let us know what's going on there, the pace of it all. So that we can actually help. Now.
Larry, I'm gonna have Scott right there.
So let me make this one last statement, right? The data from today is certainly different from the data of seven months ago. And we have been learning, adjusting and making uh, that humanitarian effort each and every day as a city council. So.
Larry, thanks. Juan and then Stuart.
No, I think, uh, yeah, I just wanna add on. I think Antonio said it best. We don't really know the magnitude of impact, you know, this COVID nineteen is gonna have in our. You know, our, on, on, on the tenants in East Palo Alto. Um, you know, I, I think Antonio said it best as well. We need to start working with these, more closely with these nonprofits that are already doing the work and seeing how we can adequately. Provide assistance at city council, whether that's through funding or through sending, you know, people to actually help them process these applications. So I, I think, yeah, I think Antonio said it best. And I think also that, you know, if evictions do happen. It goes more beyond than just losing your home. It is a permanent and harmful stamp on an individual that impedes their opportunity of qualifying for future housing. So I think we need to put that into perspective as council and come up with a way. To, you know, deny admission of any, to any COVID-related evictions to landlords or ten, or, you know, to landlords. So anybody who's been evicted by COVID nineteen should not be a reason why they should not be able to apply to future housing. Some sort of ordinance of that, so whether it's in the works already or whether it exists already, should be making its way through city council and that.
Already done that.
We are stopping and slowing down the evictions. And like I said, we don't, we don't have the data in magnitude. Are we prepared, you know? Um, for the, these evictions are coming. That is all I have to say. I think, like I mentioned, I don't wanna get too repetitive.
Sure. Stuart and then Lisa.
So two points, uh, one on the data, I have to push back on Larry's data about eighty-six percent as well. And that's from the county viewpoint. Um, so my day job, I'm an organizing director at the Housing Leadership Council, so San Mateo County. So part of my job is to monitor or to supervise his reporting. And just one example is on the immigrant relief fund that was uh. The, the county seeded it with some measure K funds, uh, which we all pay into for affordable housing through sales tax. Uh, they put in four million dollars. John Sabrato, through his foundation, put in five million dollars and managed to raise like another six. So John Sabrato is, is pretty much responsible for eleven million dollars in the immigrant relief fund for the entire county. That fund is now depleted and will need about three million dollars a month to keep folks in their homes till December. I mean, till January first. So the eighty-six percent of folks being. Uh, caught up on their rent, I have a real hard time.
Those are Woodland Properties. That's Woodland.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Just Woodland.
Thank you. You said that. The second point, um, so if we, I, I appreciate the mama love from Lisa saying, look. If y'all, if you just take care of yourself, you'll get that done. Uh, um, to Carlos's point, how do you do that appropriately? Well, we are only two and a half square miles. If folks wanna do some walking and social distancing and knock on doors and say, hey, you know, do a welfare check. How are you all doing? You know, how, how should we talk to you? What's, what's your language of choice? Have that conversation with them, coach them through it, drop off some supplies and then gather information about what's happening in this household. Cause we're not tracing yet. We still don't know which households, where it's happening and how that's spreading. So we need to do something that we can do locally. Possibly with volunteers, possibly some of the young folks to live in peace or the Boys and Girls Club, train them up and and get these cores out there. And supporting our people.
Lisa. Sure, and 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 I respect all of that. I just wanted to reiterate with uh, Samaritan House, when we went out. Um, and we understood their funding, we, when we as a council, cause I know the, the mayor, the, the mayor and I. Spoke with Samaritan House when we knew there was a, a, an issue with, with language. Um, I know that there were some individuals from the West Side that where the, the applications didn't work. Uh, we corrected that. So we contacted Samaritan House to correct that. When we found out that they were requesting that people leave their personal information in a mail box that was outside, that didn't, wasn't secure. We contacted Samaritan House and we corrected that. So as the council, we are working to, 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 to address those issues and 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 um. And take care of those. This council has been working really hard to take care of our residents. We have put in the strongest tenant protection practices and we continue to work with those nonprofits. When we know that there is something going on, we're looking at them and we're trying to fix them.
So thank you, Lisa. Lisa just uh, is leading into my next question. And Carlos and Lisa and Larry can talk about what the city council is doing from firsthand experience. But now what I'd like to know is, what hasn't the city council done that you think it should be doing? And if elected, what would you like to do to get it done? So what isn't the city council doing or hasn't done that you think should be done? And Webster, you've been quiet for a while, so I'll start with.
Well, I kinda wanted to, I didn't get a chance to comment on the COVID nineteen response, but I just wanted to say something real quick.
Sure.
Um, just in response to um, Larry, you know, over the last six months, a lot of people have been receiving. Well, not a lot, um, fiscal stimulus, you know, and that has helped somewhat. But right now, it's been almost two months since a lot of people have gotten unemployment checks and stimulus. So the effects that we're gonna see will really start showing up soon. And you can really look at. The uh, unemployment data and the unprecedented demand from, for basic essentials that we're seeing from our nonprofits. Um, so this, this wave is coming and we have to prepare for it. We just can't just write it off, you know? Um, unfortunately, I know some people who've died from COVID. And I think we need to educate the community and take it seriously. Increasing um, testing, making sure our statistics are accurate. Um, when I was out walking, you know, um, people are asking me for masks, you know? Where can we go in the community to get free masks, you know, and encourage social distancing? And I think, you know, we just need to really just prepare for this um, wave that's coming, cause you know, it's, it's coming and we just can't just write it off, you know, so that's.
I don't think anybody's writing it off. I think we've been actively engaged in that topic, right? So I, I think um, I think that's inappropriate for you to say that, that we're writing it off. Uh, we'd spend sleepless nights thinking about the health and welfare of our local residents. And we have um, you know, every, every nook and cranny of information that we're gonna on, over to. You know, learn about, that we can implement in our community, we've done it over the last, certainly over the last uh, three, three months, so.
Yes, I know. Um, and even if you look at the unemployment data, it's, we're dearly triple out of the other regions that surround us. And a lot of people that aren't included in that unemployment data are um, immigrants and people who may not have, you know, legitimate jobs, you know? So that's what make the majority, I mean, not majority, that's a large demographic in our community.
Well, I'm an employment specialist and I actually, you know, I track that data every day. And what the county, the county unemployment rate is coming down, but East Palo Alto, we're at about eleven point two percent, right? And that's our reality, right?
So, so you all have had a chance to talk now and um, I'm sure you have a lot more to say. But I'll have to move on to give others a chance to give their input. Stuart.
So this is really quick. In response to Larry's comment about that, the entire county. I just wanna say that Webster's really on point when he says, in that report, they showed three hotspots. Uh, Half Moon Bay, Shoreway and, I mean, sorry, North Fair Oaks and East Palo Alto were the highest. Uh, recipients for the immigrant relief fund. And and they can't show up on an unemployment record because to Webster's point, and I, I wouldn't call them illegitimate jobs. Uh, or not legitimate jobs. I would call them jobs that aren't.
They're in the gray market.
Counted legally. They're in the gray, yeah, they're in the gray area.
Yeah, and Daly City is on that list as well.
So let's go on with that question. What hasn't the city council done that you think it should do? And if elected to the council, how would you get it done? So Carlos.
So you're, you're asking incumbents what we haven't done?
Sure. Talking about transparency.
Sure. I, I, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll start. I mean, I, I think we should all be um, introspective and self-critical. Um, certainly, I think the full implementation of measure H, H is important. It is one of the reasons I am running again, is um, you know, we have to make sure that we have a career ladder program that works. We're not gonna throw this money away. We're gonna investigate it, work with the community, certainly look at national programs. And figure out how indeed we activate and make this career STEM building trades. Um, uh, program work. It will actually be very unique and it's actually funded in perpetuity through measure HH, which I helped put on the ballot. So that's one criticism. Uh, I, I, I think we're, we're moving in the direction, but still, it's, it's problematic. I think the other, you know, the other issue where um, it has been difficult for us, there's two, two other quick issues. Uh, it's to, to address is the massive infrastructure needs of the city, about three hundred and sixty, seventy million dollars. Now, keep in mind, Palo Alto has about one point six billion dollars. So we're not the only city with these issues. But the financing of that magnitude of need is difficult. And I don't believe that we've actually done uh, a, 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 a good enough job yet and it's, we're teeing it up. To figure out where we can get some of that money, both self-financing and then, you know, we've done a fairly good job. Well, I've been on council, we brought in about a hundred and forty million dollars of outside funding, but I think that's important. And lastly, many people, I know there's measure C and, you know, Brother Highland, um, you know, hats off to the folks that worked on that. But we do need to figure out a permanent funding source for social programs in the community for youth. For um, uh, you know, for reentry, folks that are reentering from the, from the prison system and for seniors. We haven't done that. It has to be a permanent source, not a measure C. We gotta make sure that it never goes away.
Sure. Antonio. What hasn't the city council done that you think should be done? That you would try to do if elected?
Absolutely. So when I think about what it means for, Carlos said it best, self-determination, right? The ability for a community to define its own future, right? And this is where I think the important precedent, the African-American Freedom Struggle is important. Cause after the end of chattel slavery, after Sherman's Forty Acres and the mules, what is one of the first things that African-Americans did? Create a university, right? So we have FIS, we have HBCUs, we have a slew of higher education institutions, right? To help energize our community to think about that. Now, I'm not advocating for a college in East Palo Alto. What I am advocating for is for the push to create a pipeline where the nineteen percent of East Palo Alto residents. Who have a bachelor's can be on par with the eighty-three percent in Palo Alto, with the eighty-seven percent of Stanford. You cannot elevate a community if you do not educate it first, whether we're talking about educating people, Lisa said. How do we get people to stop wearing masks? Education. When you think about how to get folks to COVID test, how to do that, education. So for me, as speaking as a young millennial, it begins with the youth and really transforming that generation because it's always been the youth. Whether we're talking about the civil rights struggle, the Black Power movement or the incorporation, it has been youth that has led and transformed this city. And so we need to build pipelines, like my brother's keeper. We need to build mentorship programs. And this is, I think, the succession that is in place, Carlos and the comment to see here, creating that. Pop that infrastructure economically to help bolster and inspire the next generation to figure out, we're coming back from college. How can we afford to stay in here in East Palo Alto when the average studio apartment is over three thousand dollars? So there's more I wanna say. Um, I think revitalizing our black community with creating black businesses and forced housing is important, addressing that. I think returning from, folks returning from prison or seniors is important. But if I had to advocate for two minutes, one of the most important platforms, it is absolutely education.
Sure, Juan.
Yeah, I agree. Well, first of all, I wanna thank Carlos for the transparency of, you know, of where the flaws lie in city, on our current city council. And I think, you know, part of that is, you know, what I'm advocating for, youth opportunities, as Antonio mentioned, we are. The future of East Palo Alto. So how are we mobilizing and energizing and preparing them to take on these roles? How are we gonna, how is, are we gonna pass the torch to sort of? How are we gonna, how is, are we gonna pass the torch, to sort of say? How are we gonna ensure that these, that our youth are able to go off to college, come back and, you know, live in East Palo Alto and work in East Palo Alto, most importantly, and raise a family here as our parents did, right? So when I see what, what's missing in East Palo Alto, part of it is also, you know, youth opportunities, it's the infrastructure and more advocacy and leadership, you know? What I wish to see in my city council currently would be, you know, why aren't we knocking on Facebook's door and asking for an internship? Secure internships for our youth to participate in these programs and tech, in, in these tech companies, right? How, we need to understand that our kids or the children of East Palo Alto can't compete with the Palo Alto kids, who have the resources, who have the parents, who know people that can get them into these different spaces that we haven't been able to get into, right? So we need leadership in, in that sort where they're advocating for youth in East Palo Alto. And aside from that, as well as more vulnerable residents, the seniors, right? We've done, I don't think we've done an adequate job enough of, you know, keeping them in mind. And as we mentioned at a topic, you know, we learn from them and we stand on their shoulders and their work and what they've done for our city. So we must not forget about them as well. And lastly, um, you know, I think what we're also missing is, uh, just a different perspective on how to approach the issues that East Palo Alto is facing. We just need a new energy and a new mindset, um, and new policies, you know, to ensure that we can reimagine in East Palo Alto for everyone. And I, I think I can end with that today.
Sure, sure. Now Lisa, uh, is there something that you thought you'd do when you get on the council that hasn't been done? And if you could do it all over again, you would work to get it done?
Sure, um, uh, thank you for that question. You know, I ran on improving communication within the city and trying to make sure that we are, um, doing a better job of that. And I, I still think there's still work to be done because people communicate and they do things differently. Um, the millennials work in a different way than, than we would work. So how do we get, um, information out to the community members so that people understand better what's really going on in the community? And that is something that I think that we really need to focus on and, and do a better job of. When you asked the question about what would you do differently, I thought you were referencing COVID as well. I do agree that we need to figure out where the masks are gonna be available and where we're gonna provide those supplies. You know, when COVID happened, I wanted to use police vehicles to, 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 to go around the community and, and give a message, the same message in different languages, so that we could get to the people, because people aren't necessarily coming to us. So communication is gonna be a big, uh, a big thing that we need to continue to work on. And a youth commission. I've been advocating for a youth commission now for a few years and we haven't gotten there. And in order to, if we're going to really develop future leadership, we need to have a youth commission within our community. Because I agree, we are making decisions without the voices of the youth and we need to make sure that we're, we're hearing for the youth. One thing I would say to Juan with Facebook, um, we, there is a year up program within the city of East Palo Alto, um, that, that Live in Peace, well, I, I know that Live in Peace had more than, um, ten people who went through the, the year up program at Facebook and their jobs have converted over to jobs. Could we do more? Yes, we can do more. And we can't say that one program is enough. I do agree with you. At, at study.com, where I worked as the Government Affairs Manager, we came in and we provided thirty, um, degrees. People are earning a degree that will cost them no money in the city of East Palo Alto in an effort to change outcomes within the city. So we need to continue those programs. We started My Brother's Keeper and we have not been able to get My Brother's Keeper off the ground within the city of East Palo Alto. That's all to change outcomes for young men and boys of color. We need to continue that effort and we need more people at the table that's gonna make that happen. That person can't do it alone.
Thank you, thank you. Now, what I'd like to do, and Larry, I'm gonna give you a chance to answer that question too. However, what I'd like to do is ask each of you, given the forums that you've gone through already, what is it that you haven't said that you'd like to say? What you haven't said during any of the forums, that you haven't said here now, that you'd like to share with yours?
So is that a Larry, or is it? Does she start with me or?
Larry, Larry, let's go with you and then.
Uh, I, I mean, am I answering the question that Lisa answered?
That, that could be part of your answer.
Okay, all right. All right, it's your rules, Henry Rada. So, uh, first of all, I wanna, I want to say, um, I applaud this, this, this theme around education because I've been engaged in that as the, the, the clear activity that we can all participate in to raise the quality of life in our East Palo Alto community, right? I've been dedicated almost two decades towards that effort. Most recently, um, we were able to, Henry Rada knows this, and, and many of you should. Um, Kenyatta College now provides a shuttle service from our community to Kenyatta, right? Because for years, the barrier of transportation prohibited many of our local residents from attending the community college, right? Now they started a promise, uh, uh, initiative at Kenyatta. So the for, the food scarcity issues are addressed, books and supplies are addressed, right? Tuition are all addressed, right? How is a big part of that activity, right? Sitting on the President's Advisory Commission and telling them, our community needs access to that community college. But also, more importantly, you need to consider working with Ravenswood to open up some of these school sites, uh, campuses at night so we can have Kenyatta classes here in the community for our local residents. They're embark, they're embarking upon that conversation right now. At our last goal-setting meet, meeting in February, uh, Lisa and Carlos can attest, I tried to make a strong ar- argument for creating a millennial, right, commission, right? Because I too believe, right, what my sons tell me, right? Who are in your, your, uh, your peer group, right? You guys have a way of communicating that we have to catch up with. You guys have some ideas and thoughts that could get incorporated into the community. You can be instrumental in helping create the vision for East Palo Alto community, right? And then the last thing I would say, Henry Rada, is that if I can.
Well.
Many of the A H O O.
If we have the time, because right now, what I'd like to do is give everybody one minute to say.
Okay.
Whatever it is that you haven't said that you think is important, or if you have said that you would like to share. It's like your final thoughts. So Stuart. If I can get that to you, Larry.
Oh.
So to begin with, I just want to finish off the last thing that was said, what wasn't done right by this city council. And Carlos actually was on point when he said Measure C wasn't being permanent. This city council in twenty eighteen knew Measure C was gonna end. So twenty sixteen, they could have began working on extending and that could have been the funding for My Brother's Keeper in perpetuity. But it was not presented by the city council when they were well aware of the, the ending time of it and, and also well aware of the, the positive effects that came from it through a research study by Bright Star. One thing that I would really want to say, um, that I haven't said before is, change is really important. Change is a way to be reactive to what's going on. And I would say, if you're looking at this group and you're looking at all the talent, yes, you could say thank you to the incumbents, you all did a great job, we're gonna do something a little, little different. Feel comfortable with that. But I, I would do it based on your knowledge of the individuals that you hear, not just from what they're saying, but what they've done over time. And so even though some folks may be younger, your career is your career and what you're doing with your time is what you're doing with your time. If you can validate that, feel comfortable with change.
Thank you. Carlos.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I, I think I, I'd like to at least elevate right now, um, this, you know, the, an, an issue that I've talked about before. But I, I, I think it's really important for the community to address the issues of planning and how, what our city is gonna look like in the future upfront and to set the rules in place. We've done that with the general plan, we've done that with, um, the West Side Area Plan, and we need to respect those rules. That's why we plan. And the specific plan for the Ravenswood Business District, about two hundred acres, probably the most fertile uh, land for development in the city, is being reviewed and possibly revised. And that is gonna have massive implications on this community over the next twenty years. And we have to keep an equity and economic justice lens focused on that planning process to make sure we do not get shortchanged and developers don't come in here and bully us to accepting projects that clearly are in their benefit and not in ours.
Thank you so much. I'm going to have to kind of conclude it up. Webster.
Um, well, you know, uh, I think as council members, we're elected by the people to serve the people. Um, and, you know, one of my focuses is really, um, on the most vulnerable in our community, um, and providing them with opportunities. Um, you know, my, uh, I've per- I've personally experienced, you know, going through, you know, immigrating and coming, you know, to this country. You know, my wife, she's from Colombia, you know, and there's a lot of people in this community that are looking for opportunities, you know? And I want to focus on providing people with those opportunities. And just like Larry said, you know, we have schools that are empty right now. How come we're not using those for, say, ESL classes or technology classes that allow people to really, you know, not get taken advantage of when they come to this country? You know, providing them with the base, you know? So that's one thing that I, you know, would also, um, focus on. And that's one thing that I would wanna, um, continue to provide, you know, people, especially the most vulnerable, you know, in our community.
Thank you. Antonio.
What I want to end with isn't a policy, isn't a self-promotion, isn't a vote for me with a big banner on it. It's just this following idea. We come from a people that have survived immense, immense catastrophes. Whether it's my father who came on the belly of a truck to this country or our communities and the black communities who came from Louisiana, escaped poverty and racism and press, and found the less racism here in the Bay Area, or the people from Tonga and Samoa who got visa to start a better life, right? We, as a community, uh, if there is a nationalism to East Palo Alto, we have it. This immense love for our community and this belief that we can overcome anything, because I firmly believe that. And COVID, every era, it is a new pandemic, if you will. In the eighties, it was the crack epidemic. And what did they do? The neighborhood got together and created a just us coalition, round the clock, community policing, got drugs out of our streets, right? I believe in the ability for everyday people to come together, organize and push back. And that is exactly what's happening in East Palo Alto. I have all the optimism in the world, whether I get elected or not, that the people who are fighting for this community will continue to preserve it because as Dr. Cornel West said, that eminent African-American scholar, pessimism for our community is suicide. We cannot afford to be cynical. We have to always stay on the nose and as the, as the, as the cor- as the song goes, lift every voice. So that's what we're trying to do. And I firmly believe that this city, Basque Barre Saliri, is gonna overcome, if they will.
Yeah, what if I can end with one thing is, we need to stop setting mental limitations to what East Palo Alto is capable of doing. As a community, we have a diverse range of organizations, skill sets, creativity and energy that can transform East Palo Alto to be a home for everyone. What we are missing is initiative to build alliances and coalitions to make this happen. You know, I think Antonio said it well, we need to organize. The sooner our leaders can get organized, the faster we can mobilize and spring into action, right? East Palo Alto is stronger when we all work together. We just need to set our self-interest aside and begin thinking as a community. The day East Palo Alto residents, nonprofits, city council members, faith-based organizations and businesses begin thinking as a single entity with our residents' well-being at the forefront of every decision we make, we will be unstoppable in what we are capable of achieving as a city. And that's just what I'm gonna leave off with.
Thank you so much, Juan. You know, I hate not to get to you, Lisa and to you, Larry, but you all have a chance. And right now, I'd like to thank all of you for your input. Thank you for your campaign. And I think maybe you all should consider expanding the city council, do you think?
Like the Supreme Court?
Sure, why not? So all of you put on the council. So I'd like to thank you so much for joining me. I'd like to thank you for your time. So good luck with your candidates, all of you.
Good night.
Well, that's the end of our discussion with the seven East Palo Alto City Council candidates. You have a lot of information, so please choose your top candidates and vote. Your vote is more important now than ever.